All this meeting to order. I believe everyone is present this evening, so we're in good shape there. If everyone could stand, please, for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. All right, that takes us to the adoption of the evening's agenda.
I move the adoption of the agenda.
Thank you both. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that takes us to the minutes. We have the community outreach minutes for August 18th. Do we have any motion or changes in regards to those minutes?
You see, that's a pretty good distillation.
I would just say, I just noticed there's an extra I in Dixon. But other than that, everything looked in good order to me.
The first or the second one?
Yes. D.I.X.O.N.
Yeah.
And I think Schwab is S.C.H.W.A.B. And I think Bruce should be Bernie. B.E.R.N.I.E. I think that's it. Do you have a motion to adopt these minutes?
I shall move.
Thank you, Ms. Ritter. And a second?
Okay.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
I was stating that I was not present.
Okay. Thank you, Brian.
Same for me. I wasn't present also.
Sounds good. Thank you, Ms. Rattan. And it looks like we're just waiting on the August 20th minutes, Michelle?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. That takes us to the first public hearing of the evening, subdivision of land, Chapter 147 amendment in regards to the state code change regarding administrative approvals. Michelle, did you want to give us a short update before we have the hearing?
Yes, please.
Thank you.
So, these proposed amendments are to align our code with recent changes in state code. The new state code language became effective July 1st of this year. The county administrator did keep the board updated earlier in this year with the General Assembly updates of those of interest that were based on more docs. They were pushed in March, February, March, April, and May. Once the new amendments were adopted with the effective date of July 1st, this item was on the board's agenda on June 2nd, and they sent it to the planning commission. The county attorney and the county administrator talked together and made these proposed changes to ensure that our code will align with state code. The planning commission has had this on your agenda since June 18th. It's been reviewed numerous times, and at your last meeting, the commission moved to take these amendments to public hearing. What these amendments do is remove the planning commission and board of review process, and it makes it administrative review by the designated agent. It also accelerates the review process by shortening the timeframe. Again, the only changes were to align our code with state code. The rest of the regulations have all remained the same. One other thing we did in order to help clean up was a change in our zoning ordinance in reference to the Type 2 grade standards instead of appendix C, I believe it's now attachment A. I do want to note that the board, the commission won't even make a recommendation tonight because the board has the scheduled public hearing at their next meeting of October 6th.
Thank you, Ms. Summers. And with that, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing on subdivision of land, Chapter 147 amendment to align with state code change regarding administrative approval. Anyone that would like to address the commission, please come to the microphone and state your name and the district in which you reside. And I imagine there's quite a bit of public interest in this, so if we could keep our comments to about five minutes and under, that would be much appreciated. Thank you. Who would like to speak?
Sally Haynes, Piedmont District. I realize that we are responding to a Virginia state code change, and there is some limit to how we respond. Our county administrator was quoted saying, "While these decisions are administrative, the boxes that need to be checked have been recently reviewed to make sure that everyone is comfortable with the process." While the administrative review process is being described as checking boxes, our real-life experience shows that it is anything but. It definitely is not a cut-and-dry, check-the-boxes process. We've seen this in more than one instance, and to give just a few examples, there was the approval of a three-lot subdivision on Woodward Road that did not have the required right-of-way, a zoning determination that an ordinance could be disregarded, which was overturned on appeal, and I realize that wasn't a strict subdivision plan review, and the granting of a permit to Blue Rock that had to be rescinded. So, there are areas outside the boxes. These things happened at a time when the planning commission and the Board of Supervisors had a role in plan review of subdivisions of four or more lots. Given the history, I'm not comfortable with the agent being the sole authority on plan review. I'm hoping that we will be able to have some provisions for public notice and for ways for citizens to be informed so that there is some opportunity for public input. Thank you.
Thank you, Sally. Anyone else? Anita?
Anita Ramos, Hampton District. We all should be outraged. This is totally outrageous. The General Assembly is taking away the power of our local government and our citizens in this sort of thing. We should be lobbying every single member of the General Assembly that voted for this. We should be lobbying the governor. We should be, like you say, outraged. Fairfax, by the 16th of July, was saying Fairfax staff is in compliance with new law to speed up development plan reviews. That's where it's all happening, really. But it can happen to us. One of these days, it's all going to happen to us, and we're not going to be ready for it, and we're not going to be able to do a thing about it. You can fill in the blanks.
Thanks, Anita.
Karen Hunt, Jackson District. The state code changes for subdivision of land are very concerning and problematic for a county our size. We have a one-person zoning office. Our zoning administrator already has a lot on her plate. It is detrimental to citizens, the county as a whole, to have oversight of such an important land use aspect stripped from us. A maximum 5,000 population limit to be exempted from this new subdivision agent rule is woefully inadequate. Out of 133 counties in Virginia, there are only four, four, that have a population under 5,000. There are 17 with a population under 10,000 out of 133 counties. This new state requirement places a huge burden on smaller counties like Rappahannock with very limited staff, and it now removes critical oversight by appointed and elected officials and the public. In addition to reduced oversight and shortened timeframes, the changes to state code also state that all deficiencies shall be identified in the initial submission. So, if you review what we have before us, lines 1,089, 1089 through 1097, and I'll just quote a small section, "In the review of a resubmitted proposed plat that has been previously disapproved, the agent shall consider only deficiencies identified in its review of the initial submission. And upon the second resubmission, the agent's review shall be limited solely to the previously identified deficiencies that caused its disapproval." So, if every single aspect of a plat is not scrutinized and verified and checked, and not just checkboxes, with the initial submission, even if it's identified later, even if a deficiency is identified later, the agent cannot address those deficiencies or require the submitter of the subdivision plat to correct them. If anything, anything gets missed the first time, we cannot require that it be corrected regardless of substance. This is too critical and too detailed to burden one person with in a county our size. We must make sure that we are getting every detail correct the first time and within a now-shortened timeframe. So, Rappahannock and other similar counties need to engage the state legislator now to work on getting that 5,000 population exemption increased to something more reasonable. I don't know if that's a 10,000 population or something more, but I suggest we need to be having conversations with and partnering with other counties that are in our position to try to address this at the Virginia Assembly. However, until this can be addressed at the state level, we need to implement multiple measures. Everything we can think of, whether it's posting signage at multiple locations in high-traffic areas to alert the public, requiring the immediate posting of a subdivision plat submission on a clear standalone tab on the homepage of the county website for the public and others to be aware of and review and help. We all need to help here, make sure we don't miss anything the first time. We need to implement a courtesy referral of all subdivision applications, site plans, et cetera, to the planning commission for an advisory, non-binding review to help out here. We've got one person in the zoning office. This is way too important to burden one person with who has multiple other responsibilities, and we all need to make sure that as a county, we don't miss anything in the initial and subsequent submissions because the state code severely hamstrings us. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes. Ma'am. I thought I saw a hand go up.
Monica Worth, Piedmont District. My mother used to say something that I absolutely hated, and it was that when one door closed, another door opened. And unfortunately, that didn't deal with how you felt in the moment, but that aside, I'd like to see us look at innovation here, even perhaps as we stick our foot in the door and try to keep that door from closing entirely on what we've known so long to be the role of the planning commission and the Board of Supervisors. And by that, what I mean is, how proactive can we be even as we try to change things? How proactive can we be in putting, creating a system in which citizens could opt in to be notified every single time one of those applications drops so we can be aware, plan, have a heads-up for the tiny review period that we might get? I love the ideas that Karen raises. I really agree with what she was saying overall, and especially the idea that the planning commission gets some sort of a non-binding review with the expertise that members have and the experience that they have. But why not innovate here and say, let's put together a system where everybody gets a chance? They don't have to sign up for it, but like our, you know, emergency alerts, everybody gets a chance to sign up and find out what's going on as soon as one of those things drops, and any other key actions along the way. I understand it can be a day-by-day process, but perhaps we can create a system in which citizens become much more active or much more able to be active in stewarding what we have come to cherish as a rural community. And I would be happy to be part of any group that wanted to do that, and if there was a small task force that could discuss it, something like that, even as we speak, you know, in the coming weeks, I think it would really be worth looking at. Why don't we stand up to this in that way as well as in other ways? Thank you.
Anyone else that would like to speak? Yes, ma'am.
Anne McLean, I think I'm Jackson, Jackson District. So, I wasn't planning on saying anything, but I just wanted to offer what I found out in a few minutes after work today. I definitely oppose the state bill and understand that your hands are tied somewhat, but I did find out that we're not alone. I looked up the voting record and found out that about 91 reps approved this. There were 91, 89 yays and two people who supported it who weren't there voting. There were only eight that were nays. One of them was Representative Weber, so I called him, and I got a call back right away. He's not aware that we in Rappahannock are looking at this, reviewing it, but it is of interest to him, so we have him to reach out to. Also, in July, Falls Church City adopted a resolution to oppose SB 974 and to request amendments to the state code. They requested their city planners to explore ways for the public and planning committees to provide advisory comments on site plans. They appointed their planning director as the designated agent, and they adopted an agenda item, a standing agenda item on the planning commission meetings of all the submitted site plans. They also initiated pre-meetings with site plan applicants to deal with the shortened timeline. I'm personally in favor of signage everywhere. I don't think on the address, I mean, in Rappahannock already, you know, you have to drive somewhere down some road to see something that's posted at an address. I don't think that's enough. Online posting should be the minimum, but also maybe posting at the dump or posting somewhere very, very visual courthouse, you know, the co-op. Also, just adding public comment and planning commission to advise whoever does ultimately have this decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Diane Bruce, Sperryville. I thought that you all were unaware that this was in the process. I thought you did not know that this was going through the General Assembly, that it had not been brought to your attention. I can't find anything in the minutes or the staff reports where you were advised that this was proceeding, and I think that's very unfortunate. I suspect that we are a member of VACO. Why wasn't VACO letting us know? Did VACO send the county administrator anything about it? Mr. Weber is the, he's the representative, House of Representatives. He was involved in the bill when it started in the House of Representatives. At the same time, Mr. Reeves was involved in the bill when it started in the Senate, which is not uncommon. When bills get started in the legislature, they get in both houses, and then eventually they come together in one house. You got something, you got something in your February agenda reports that spoke of the House bill, quote, laying on the table. What that means is the House is not going to pursue it. You've got one information that I'm aware of, that there was a Senate bill with the exact same provisions that was going forth. When you got your February agenda, it said something about February 1st or February 3rd was when it was laid on the table. But on January 30th, five days earlier, the Senate bill had already been approved by the committees. There were like 30 meetings, committee meetings for these two bills that eventually ended up into one bill. There was lots of opportunity to have been advised. I don't know if the county administrator got the information or not, but I don't think you all knew it was out there because I think you would have done something. I think you would have said, let's get involved before the governor signs it. But I guess we just didn't know about it, and I think VACO has let you down. I'm not sure what's happening, but I think we need to ask Mr. Weber and Mr. Reeves to get busy and get in touch with the other counties who are in the same fix they're in. I think there are only seven of us that are under 10,000, and we actually have the highest population of those seven, but we are at like 7,300. Highland County is one of those counties. This needs to be modified in the next General Assembly, and our legislators need to be working with the representatives for those other counties. Now, what are we going to do in the meantime? I don't know, because I can't imagine what can happen between now and whenever we do something, but I think you have to impose some provisions or restrictions to make it more difficult. I'm curious to know, and I'm sure Michelle can tell me this, but how long does she have? I know she has 30 days to do something after she accepts it, but if I bring my application in today, how long does she have before she has to accept it? Maybe there's no time limit, or maybe there is. But when it is accepted, does it already have to have VDOT approval and Health Department approval, or does that happen after she accepts it and has to be done in the 30-day period? I just feel like we need to have protections put in there that make it more difficult and more specific, harder, harder for the applicant. I also think our county attorney needs to be on top of the law. He needs to be advising and leading the Board of Supervisors. We're all laypeople. You're all laypeople, some of the supervisors. You're all laypeople. We're not lawyers. You're not lawyers. We want the county attorney to be on top of this and giving good, strong advice and leadership. I would suggest that we hire a zoning expert or someone to consult with. Every time one of these applications comes in, Michelle should go to this consultant and say, have I seen everything? Have I done it right? Would you please look at it? This doesn't mean you have to have a 40-hour-a-week employee, but you need somebody who is an expert in zoning, in my humble opinion, who can help her. This is too much for one person to do. I know Mr. Henry said at a prior meeting, oh, it's just a list of boxes to be checked. I'd like to see the list of boxes, and I'm sure she'll give it to me if I ask for it, but what does she have to check off and what does she have to consider before she checks it off? She needs professional assistance. One person can't do all of this. She needs help, and you need to recommend that to the Board of Supervisors.
Diane, I really hate to interrupt anyone. I had asked to keep about five minutes. Are you almost done?
No.
Could we come back and listen to the rest of it during public comment?
Sure.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mrs. Chairman, I think Mrs. Bruce made a mistake in her presentation. I know that she would have wanted to correct it, in that her branch of government got confused. We're not dealing with the federal government. You said the House of Representatives. It's the House of Delegates, correct.
Yes, that's correct.
I know you might have been confused on whether we were dealing with Richmond or Washington, DC, but we're in Richmond.
All right.
Good, correct. Yes, ma'am.
Who else would like to speak on this?
Rick Kohler. I'm the president of Rappahannock League for Environmental Protection. I'd like to just speak very briefly for that. You've gotten in your package a letter that we sent, so I won't belabor it. We do think that an advisory committee would be a great idea. You know, a corporation can be a person. I don't know why the planning commission couldn't be a person and be the designated agent, but that's power, that's above my pay grade. That's all I have to say for RLP. I'd like to just speak for myself. Rick Kohler, Jackson District. Ladies and gentlemen of the planning commission, Board of Supervisors, and the Rappahannock public at large, I speak to all, to all of us, as one body. The wolves of chaos have entered Virginia and are upon our doorstep. Our windows are open, the doors crack, and the foundation trembles. In 2020, the county enacted important updates to the comprehensive plan, the first in 20 years. Five years later, nothing has been done to align or improve our zoning. We dither over the wording of an ordinance, attempting perfection, an unreasonable and, frankly, unattainable goal. We need to move forward and enact good ordinances, then remain vigilant for amendments to make them better. For five years, we have struggled to replace our flawed, outdated, and unenforceable sign ordinance. It's not rocket science. We may finally be getting close. Hurrah! But the time spent gives me pause. Our subdivision ordinance, crafted from fog years, perhaps in 1989 with subsequent amendments, is weak, frail, and fails to address the exigent circumstances of today such as data centers, national electric needs, mountain development, historic preservation, lighting standards, mining, water quality and quantity, climate change, and more. And now, state overreach is upon us. The governor has signed a bill stating citizens and even neighbors should no longer be involved or even advised of subdivisions. Too much red tape and wasted time for developers. Once upon a time, Rappahannock citizens were concerned about sludge applications on county farms. Within six months or so, we enacted a sludge ordinance. It was not perfect, and we knew parts could easily be challenged. A sludge lady told us so. We move forward and instituted a county requirement that application of sludge be reported to the Commissioner of Revenue for recordation on the tax record, an excellent disincentive. Time marches on, even as we speak. Will the wolves of chaos destroy what we know as Rappahannock County? Will its beauty, character, mountains, woodlands, fields, and rivers survive the onslaught? Will we become another Manassas struggling to maintain a small piece of our history? Are we to lose the beauty, serenity, and soul-building pleasure of Rappahannock by dithering until it's too late? Will we eventually bemoan our county, become like everywhere else, a commodity on a Walmart shelf? No longer different, no longer healthy, no longer home. We were simply too busy to stand up. We dithered, we're lazy, and failed to take the reins of our own destiny. I say no. Let us take the reins, not just those of the elected or appointed seats of Rappahannock government, but all the citizenry. We are all responsible for our lives and our future. We cannot allow edicts from someplace far from home to determine our future. Did the founding fathers of this country allow that? As a matter of record, copies of all subdivision or rezoning requests should be posted on the county website as they are submitted, whether complete or not. It's a good starting point. I have heard some other ideas tonight that may prove even more viable. Our best means of defense is to upgrade our zoning and comprehensive plan. If the developers and politicians don't like it, too bad. Developers must still comply with the county ordinances. Amend or rewrite to improve them now, then tinker with further improvements as necessary to make us stronger. A man recently said about politics, this is a knife fight. You will not win with a butter knife. Our rights to be heard and have a hand in what happens in and to Rappahannock is ours to defend with the sword and shield of zoning and planning. We must not be kicked aside for the sake of someone else's greed, stupidity, or lack of vision. I thank all in this room, on Zoom, and who may not even know about this yet, for participating in this bold and necessary endeavor. As the immortal Phil Irwin said, "It's okay to be different." We must remain Rappahannock, or at least be proud we tried. Two arms.
Would anyone else like to speak? Would anyone else like to speak on this? Seeing no one else that wishes to speak, I'll go ahead and, yes, sir.
Rob Morgan from Piedmont.
Rob Morgan from Piedmont. Good evening, Commissioners, and thank you. I wanted to be the last, if possible. I have little to add to the six speakers who preceded me, who all made great points. I would just urge you to do all, take all the measures you can to provide transparency and notice to the citizens of Rappahannock. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Because this is a public hearing, it'll really just be this one comment period, and then if you have anything that you'd like to say, you can follow up in public comment. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? This is really, it's time to turn it over to the commission to debate. If everyone's had one chance at the apple, then that's really the way it needs to be. We are not on Zoom, as you know, ma'am. Thank you. All right. Any further questions or anyone else that would like to speak? Sally, you've already spoken.
There were some typos, hypholite, and support in the ordinance.
Would you like to hand them into the...
Yes.
There you go. Thank you so much.
Back to you.
All right. Anyone else? All right. Seeing no one else that would like to speak, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing and turn to my fellow commissioners. Ladies and gentlemen, anybody want to take a first shot?
I don't like this one bit.
Yeah, I think we all feel that way.
I'd like to see that neither Weber nor Reeves voted for it. My question is, even if we don't adopt it, it's still the rules. So I'm probably going to make a motion that we send the Board of Supervisors a recommendation of denial.
We can't deny it. Why? Because it's enforced by the state. What we can do...
We have states that regard, disregard, and federal, so, I mean, you can still do that, so, I mean, to make a, to make a statement anyway, maybe that will add to their ability or willingness to relook at the numbers. Saying, well, yeah, maybe Rappahannock can...
That's just my recommendation. I mean, my vote doesn't count in the end.
It does. Christine's counts.
I'll take a stab at this, too. You know, it's a history behind how everything, the origins of things, and if you look across the state, you see different interpretations on the zoning process and on efforts to regulate it. Last year, I did a two-acre lot cut off my farm in the valley for my nephew to build a house, and the process took about a month. I had to get a survey perk and submit it into the zoning department, and it cost me $1,000 and took a month to do. In Falkirr County, a couple of years ago, I helped a family cut 10 acres off of a 500-acre farm. It was the house that they wanted to sell separate from the land, and it was a, I'm going to call it a virgin piece of land, has never been touched since, you know, 1750. And it took about eight months and $15,000 to do this, and that was pretty much an effort to slow things down, regulate things, and create a burden on applicants. And Ms. Bruce made a comment here that we need to make it harder on applicants. Harder was the word. Well, you know, the way property rights should be viewed is that it's a level playing field. In other words, if you want to divide a piece of land, you should be given a list of things to do, and you have to do this list, and it should be objective, and if you do these things, then you get approved. Culpeper County, about 20 years ago, was a division down off of Woodaloo Road, and the developer did everything. It was a creation of like 10 lots, and they did everything. All the boxes we checked, everything was done correctly, and the supervisors simply did not like it, and they denied the subdivision. Well, the applicant went and hired an attorney and said, you don't have any choice. You have to approve this. Everything was done by your ordinance. You have to approve it. And their attorney said, he's right. So I think across Virginia, you've seen efforts by municipalities and probably in areas that have had more intense development than Rappahannock County, that have done these things, slowed the process, to take away property rights, which are a big item, particularly with the present administration. And I think this is an effort by the state to bring things back into the middle of the road, and there is a national push. It's just the reality of it. I'm not supportive of the not or not support. I'm just saying the reality of it is, there is a national effort afoot now to create more housing opportunities, and one of the ways to do that is that you've got to start with a piece of land in the beginning and to make it more affordable and things like this. So this is all part of that effort. Now, what was ironic was to me here in these presentations tonight, one of the speakers got up here and spoke, you know, about, you know, posting, the division process, and all this. Well, I know this one particular person spoke. They had a division in the last 10-plus or minus years with a family. They created, you know, family division ordinances to provide a lot to a child to build a house, opportunities like this, and this particular family took a piece of land, divided it, and sold it all, and it was, nobody built a house there for the family. And it was all an effort to create economic rewards for that family. And I have to say, there was a block that they checked off for each item, five lots who created with no county review. They made the lots, and they sold the lots subsequently. And, you know, was that right or wrong? I don't know, but there was no review by the public on that approval process. In that particular time, the shoe fit that person, but now, when somebody else wants to divide a piece of land, the shoe doesn't fit. So I think this brings it back to some point of equilibrium where it's an equal playing field for everybody. Now, I'm going to ask Michelle. Michelle, how many divisions do you handle a year now? When was the last time you handled a division? I guess you could say...
Maybe 10.
10 of what?
A year.
A year? And how big, how big are they? How many lots have you created?
Just one.
Somebody takes a piece of land, makes one lot. And when have you had, the last time you had, somebody creating more than five lots?
In my tenure here, never.
How long you been here?
Since late 17.
17, so you've been here eight years and haven't had nothing bigger than five.
I went back in our records for no loss, and the team of the Planning Commission and Board was back in the 90s.
Okay. So on top of this, if you look at our land area, where, what do we have to develop? You know, we do have some land around the villages that have two-acre and five-acre zoning, but the majority of the land is ag. You've got 20% of the land in the county in the park. You've got 20% under easement, and then you've got the other 60% that is ag, conservation, residential, whatever. So, you know, there's a lot of protection in this county, and it's a scary word, division, but in reality, you know, it's not something that is happening here in the county. You know, if somebody has a, I don't know, a 10-acre lot, and they make a, and it's in R5, and they made two 5s, is that bad? Should we, should all the camels come and stick their nose underneath that tent and make it hard for that person? Do they have a right to, if they check everything, do they have a right to make two, five-acre lots without a 30, 60, 90-day review? I think they've got some basic rights, and I think if you have an informed and educated and competent zoning person, that's what should be done. And actually, that was the way the county operated for years and years. When John McCarthy was here, he was a designated zoning person. He approved the plans, looked at the qualifications and all that. Chris, you've divided land in the county. Did John McCarthy do a good job when you divided a piece? Huh?
I hope so.
Yeah, you divided more than one parcel in the county. Did you think the county was ever violated by anything like this?
I hope so.
No? No? So you did a good job. He was right. So, I mean, we've been largely operating underneath that system for years as a designated person, and it worked. So if you've got a competent person that knows what they're doing, it's, I think it creates an equilibrium here for them.
I think that there's going to be increased pressure for development, that if we don't, as Mr. Kohler said, be a little proactive in terms of protecting this land, and we're going to have subdivisions that we don't like. You know, there may be some that we like, but nobody will have the opportunity to review those, comment on them, maybe require different housing alternatives, smaller, you know, less close together, or whatever, whatever you have that might make them less like the subdivisions we have come to know and hate and we don't want in the county. And I don't see, I mean, one alternative would be to say the Planning Commission is the agent.
I think there's difficulties with those logistics. Michelle, did you want to speak about that, or Gary, would you care to address that?
I would question highly whether the law that was changed from specifically referencing the Planning Commission to designated agent, could it be interpreted that the designated agent could be the Planning Commission, which is awards that were struck out of the state law? And like you noted, with the body meeting only once a month, even if you call it a quick meeting, it'd be hard to make the first 45-day review and then the subsequent quicker reviews. I don't think it's lawful, but I'm not a attorney, so I wouldn't advise you to...
Well, the county could define agent as including the Planning Commission, and we could have an expedited schedule in the event that there is a subdivision application.
Yeah, so, of course, yeah, we, the Board can adopt an ordinance that says pretty much anything we want, and at the end of the day, you know, the other purpose of this room will sort it out and say something like Michelle said earlier. This is exceedingly infrequently used in this community. Mr. Hackens, I think, went through it quite a long time ago on Woodaloo Road, but very, 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 very rarely. Right now, in the ordinance, divisions of three lots or less are already approved by the designated agent.
Yeah, but that's really different than 10, 20, you know, so...
So, yeah.
I mean, saying that that's okay is not saying, that seems like a totally different situation.
How does everybody else feel about this? I think that we can probably craft some language to make...
What bothers me the most is it seemed to be an arbitrary thing based on population, not on the number of divisions or the size of lots. I mean, it didn't seem, that didn't seem right to me. That's what kind of irritates me about the whole thing.
Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I guess I'd like to zero in on the action here to, you know, when this came to us, it was, we need to make the ordinance compliant with the state code, but I think one of the things that the public has rightfully and thankfully pointed out is, while that is true that that's what we're doing, but we didn't really think about the underlying ordinance as being something that could be implemented through the administrative process. So in many ways, we've been relying on the public hearing process and the Planning Commission process to apply general, general standards or general considerations that we could bring to the conversation at that time. So to me, the most compelling thing I've heard is that, you know, in terms of what our actions are, the idea of kind of making this change and making this public and, you know, just opening up the box and kind of making it known, okay, we've changed, now all you've got to do is come, you know, we, I think that should be delayed as long as possible, and while we're doing it, we should consider if there's other changes that we would want to make to this before we publicize that this is, this is available. I mean, it may be true that we would be subject to, you know, we'd be overruled, but that's not the same as moving quickly to change it and making it public, that, hey, Rappahannock just changed and simplified its zoning ordinance. So I'm not sure if it's a recommendation of denial or whatever it is. I think it could, to me, it could be a recommendation of stopping, you know? We just recommend no further action on this until further consideration of the underlying ordinances, and then we take our chances with respect to our compliance with the state. I just don't, I feel like in many ways, we've approached this, rightfully so, as, look, we've got to make some administrative tweaks to this because the state changed the law, but is there a time constraint? Maybe there's a question in this. Is there a time constraint on when we need to make this change? I mean, it seems like it was administrative and simple because they kind of tied our hands, but if we wanted to also do some additional things to tighten it up at the same time, what would prevent us from doing that?
Preface by Adam Turner. If the state law is the state law, and if you follow some process that is not consistent with state law, and the applicant doesn't like it, I would suspect that the applicant's going to get their way at the end of the day. So if you're not responding to comments within 45 days, if you're not sending it to VDOT within five days, and you're not following all this prescriptive requirements, I don't think it would end well in court. But it's a risk, and it's a risk to make some sort of statement, and I'm not sure what you gain by making, but it's the Planning Commission's right to recommend and the Board's right to...
You know, the other reason to drag it on is that there, I think there's probably a good possibility that if we focus on it, the legislation could be changed from 7,000 to 10,000. You know, there's, what's the, who's the lobby against that?
I think you're exactly right, Mr. Federer. I think, I think we can send a mixed message to the Board of Supervisors and be effective in that way and helpful, and also be effective and helpful in terms of precipitating change in the next session and sending a clear message by sending a mixed message. I like the idea of sending a recommendation for denial if for no reason except that this overreach from Richmond is out of character for Rappahannock County, and that has always been a prevailing sentiment on the Board of Supervisors for as long as I've been on there. I think in concert with a recommendation for denial, we could send recommendations for policy or other options the Board could adopt, should it felt, feel compelled to adopt this ordinance with measures to include signage on site, posted within 24 hours, posting on the county website within 48 hours, dissemination to the members of the Planning Commission and Board of Supervisors, possibly the FOIA list could receive it as well. I was also very interested to know that when the town of Washington adopted this at their most recent meeting, they made the county administrator the agent, which I think would actually be far more appropriate, given the possible ramifications and the importance of this matter to the people of Rappahannock County. They made their town administrator the agent, not the county administrator, but they had the zoning administrator or handle the review in concert with the town administrator, but the town administrator ultimately approved the documents, signed off on them. So those are all changes that I think would be appropriate and embedded in our recommendation should also be to engage our representation and other parties in Richmond, counties in a similar size to Rappahannock County under 10,000 in population, to engage to see if there's the interest to increase the population requirements to 10,000.
And I would like to add that we do, as Mr. Light suggested, which is to review this ordinance and make sure that... this ordinance and make sure that this is what we want. I mean, the subdivision.
I know you want to speak, but I'd just like to address one thing about the, is it a denial, recommendation of denial or something else? I think we need to think about where we are in this process. It's not like it's an application before us. This is something that's been drafted that is before us to see if we are in a position to move it to the board of supervisors for hearing and change. So, to me, the right action is no action on it and then other actions on things we'd like to see kicked off. So, I'm not, maybe, maybe there's a, maybe the, you know, a recommendation to deny is, you know, has another kind of, you know, symbolic meaning to it, and I'm not sure what the intent was there, but I'd like to understand. This really isn't the same as an application. It's, we have, it's up to us whether we move it, not right?
Has it been advertised for the next board meeting?
Well, it would be in Thursday's paper, but that could be changed. The law is the law, regardless of whether.
Right, but that doesn't change our zoning ordinance.
It's our ordinance. And so now you have a situation where staff doesn't exactly know how to handle a subdivision application that comes in, you follow the letter of the county subdivision ordinance, which is way behind state code before these two bills were adopted. So, you apply the local law, it's completely inconsistent with the current state law, and then if there's a mind for planning commissioner or board to deny a subdivision, you're just handing them away. So, you might as well do it by the current state law and, you know, follow the letter of your ordinance requirements. None of the requirements for what constitutes a lawful subdivision are changing. And I said, I think, at a previous planning commission meeting when I sat with you and the board, that I do think you should look carefully at the subdivision ordinance. Look, when we, when we as a community looked at subdivision ordinance, they made a whole lot of changes, it got too much for everybody to handle. And so we said, whoa, whoa, whoa. So, I, my advice was, take care of the mandated change. Everybody knows you're not slipping in a fast one, and then focus on the changes that you want to see relative to who can subdivide, where they can subdivide, how big the parcel, all those different things, what's required on a plan, all those more subjective things that are up to the planning commission or supervisors, handle that as a second batch, just to not muddy the water of what is essentially mandated by the state.
Well, I know it's a Supreme Court decision versus a state legis, a piece of state legislation, but how is that different than our current non-compliant sign ordinance?
Today, at least in the sign ordinance, we seem to apply it to the kind of least common knowledge, where we know the re-gilbert is a function of, you can't differentiate. And so we can say, okay, the largest sign allowed for any type of use is this, we can apply that and, and it can stick.
We can invoke severability.
But this is, you know, who's reviewing it, the timetables, all of that, and the House bill that passed with the shorter timeline, that didn't have to carve out for the population size, only the designated agent, which was S.B. United Center. So, you know, you might try to go back and increase the population up to a certain rung, and are there, what, three other counties that would benefit from that?
Four.
To go from five to whatever, ten? That's not, that's not a compelling group in the General Assembly that voted for this overwhelmingly.
Well, and it doesn't change.
And then it was introduced on January seventh, and it was done on February fourteenth.
Well, and that doesn't change what's before us tonight either way. We still face what we have before us.
I'm just suggesting this was open and shut at the state level extremely quickly. And I think it's very naive to think that you're going to push the state to change it at this point. You try, but I think you're setting yourself up for risk by flaunting what the state has told you the state law.
So, Mr. Curry, in case we, for example, we get sued over this, could a judge potentially throw out the whole zoning ordinance?
No, I think what they would do is they would work the subdivision.
Which is what's going to happen anyway.
Maybe.
Well, not necessarily. I mean, you know, if it goes through administrative process, they still couldn't meet the standards. But if you, you know, they don't meet the standards, but the planning commission goes through their process and it doesn't follow what the state law is, they might get away with something that they want to do that wouldn't otherwise meet your ordinance.
You know, this, I'm not smarter than Mr. Curry. I'm not smarter than the county attorney, you know? I'm listening to what they say, and, you know, they're telling us that you've got a mandate from the state, this is the way it needs to be done, and, you know, we can play all our little games, but the state wins in the end. So, you know, we're not losing, as he said, anything in the ordinance itself, it's just there's a designated agent that's going to be handling it in its timeframes. This is what we're dealing with. We're not losing density, we're not increasing density, we're not giving up rights of what we're requiring, it's just puts in timetables and who's going to control it. And it makes it a factual decision and not a political decision.
Michelle, how's the timeframe changed to what you're accustomed to?
I'm sorry?
How's the time change different than what you're accustomed to? Forty-five days, is that ridiculous or?
Thirty days.
I know, I mean, right now, there's like no timeframe.
How long does it take you to get one done? Or is it?
Depends how busy I am, honestly.
And that's still in the nation.
You know, another thing, too, you know, you know, everybody wants to be a rebel and hold out for all this. You know, we went to, no, seriously, we went to Richmond trying to get a different outcome on the school systems and all that, and, you know, they gave us the finger. They said, you know, you're Rappahannock, you've got plenty of wealth, you know, you're a bunch of rich people that don't want to do nothing. So, we don't have a good, I don't think we have a good reputation in Richmond. I know.
Yeah, but honestly, the difference between seven thousand people and ten thousand people, five thousand and ten, I mean, that's not something that a legislator is going to fall on his stake about. If we can get some people who are interested in changing that, like our local representatives, then depending on how much.
Do we support it or not support it? What we see is vote, I heard two different things floating here.
We both know, and Reeves didn't vote.
And even if you get to fourteen, I mean, you're still looking at a huge uphill battle. I mean, I, I'm all for people's, you know, property rights, I completely get it, and I don't like telling people what they can and can't do to a certain degree, but that being said, everybody, I think, wants to keep Rappahannock as much the way it is, as much as you can, but like Mr. Curry said, state law is the state law. We can go reluctantly, we can, you know, take our time, but until we come up with a, I don't think we can just arbitrarily as much as we like to, I don't think we can just say, no, I'm not going to do it, take my toys and go home. I sat in a town council meeting last week with a town in Newmarket in the valley. They addressed this in one minute. They made, they did a designated agent, bingo, pass, and that was it, and they moved on.
But how much work went in on the planning commission?
Uh, well, it was a.
Because they have a planning commission.
They had a planning commission too, yeah.
I mean, that's, sometimes that's where the sausage is made.
But we're not giving.
And our own board would tell you that.
Michelle, we all, we, Michelle knows what goes in, Mr. Curry knows what goes in to an approval process or what's required.
Nobody's in foul.
Right, we all make mistakes even after we make a decision, and we might find that it's error made, but we're not really giving up anything, it's just clarifying the process. It makes it more objective.
I want to be clear that this is not anything about our current staff, it's about the problem of putting this, adding this to the burden of one-person zoning operation, whoever is in that position.
She does it anyway.
She doesn't do it for each level.
And we hired somebody to the other side of the house a couple of years ago. We hired a chief financial officer essentially to free up staff to do more community planning. So, I do think that we should have bandwidth to do this. I sympathize with members of the community that would like specific land use, legal expertise on this matter, and I would personally find that a well-deserved use of taxpayer funding if it should become necessary. However, it's not something you want to hire somebody to do the job and then have no applications, then you're stuck paying a salary and with, with, for a problem that doesn't exist.
You just said it.
Well, it doesn't exist now.
Doesn't exist now because.
But here's one other thing I want to say, is that I heard people say task force and blue ribbon committee, and it made me smile because I remember having conversations with Mr. Parrish about different things that would come up that were important to people, and I remember on one occasion saying, what we really need is the task force, and I think Chris said, well, we already have such and such a committee to deal with that. And then one other time, he said, well, what we really need is a blue ribbon committee, and I said, well, the planning commission already does, supposed to be the people that take care of that. So.
Yeah, we said.
I'm sorry, I wasn't quite done.
Okay.
But I, I think I have a good point. So, I think we have a very involved and responsible, responsive board of supervisors and planning commission, and I think if the board of supervisors and the planning commission are made aware of submissions, that they will review and inform. I would also say that judging from the interest in this room tonight, if people are interested in reaching out to the zoning administrator or being on a list to receive an email to stop by and review an application, should one be submitted, that's, you know, the shortest point between two, the shortest way to make your way between two points is a straight line. Just ask for the information and it'll be given to you. I don't think more appointees or processes will solve the problem, and that's the only additional point I wanted to make.
We said it's going to put additional work in, Michelle, or the zoning administrator, whoever it is. If there's a checklist, there's already a checklist, the things that you look for on a subdivision plan, ten items, twenty items, thirty items, whatever, you don't bring it to us until you're certain it's ready, that everything's been satisfied of the requirements stated.
I never brought one to you all, so I don't know.
Okay, but, all right, but whatever subdivision plans that you've looked at, that you've done under your approval, you've looked at it and did the items and checked off that these ten, fifteen, twenty items are done, so you're doing the work already. If you get a big one, whether or not it's, you know, it comes to the board or not, you're going to do the same amount of work on it, you might be a little bit more studious to make sure, questions, but you're doing the work. Yeah. So, it's not like you're going to double her bird, she's already doing her job, and she's just going to, just not communicate it to ten people, so she's doing the work. So, are we going to do something with it or we not?
Well, I think that if we want to comply with the state, then what we could do is forward this to the board of supervisors with the provisions that, that as soon as an application is made, those citizens who wish to be notified, get notified. I mean, that should be something that you can set up pretty automatically and that they have the opportunity to come see the application and discuss it with Michelle, and that there be public notices, both at the place where the subdivision is proposed and at other public spaces, so that the citizen, you know. You know, the thing about a subdivision is that it can be a major change in our county's, you know, the profile. I just, you know, it's not like one house, it's several houses, I mean, it changes the nature of the county if you permit it in different places, and so are we going to, that's A, a burden for Michelle to do on her own, but I just don't see it being right to do without some input from the people who live in the county.
But wouldn't you, sorry to just, but I just point a clarification. Are you imagining that that could be handled without writing those requirements for those notices and, you know, that opportunity written into the code, into the ordinance? It seems to me that that's exactly the kind of thing that we would want to add to the ordinance in addition to making it state compliant so that we are kind of, you know, being state compliant, but also adding the additional checks that we feel are necessary. So, I'm not sure we're there yet.
I would just say that the recommendation has been, at other points where I've brought up my concerns about all of the things that should be attendant with the, with receiving the applications, it's been, make that a policy instead of embedded in the ordinance itself. So, that would allow us to, if you all are of a mind to move this forward tonight, we could move it forward with a recommendation for approval by the board of supervisors pending the addition of a policy for how to handle the applications.
There should be two things on the policy, okay, in all fairness to the public and to the applicant. You should post a property, it said, here's a subdivision that applied for, for this property, be posted when she receives the application, completed application. And number two, she should put it, it should be posted on a website, those two items. So, anybody in the county, if they're concerned about development, can go to this website on a regular basis and see what's happening, number one. And number two, the property being posted is another item that is pretty much typical. Beyond that, I don't think we should have a list of five people or ten people that it's automatically everything sent to. I mean, if I was an applicant doing something and, you know, I looked at the list of people who's being sent to RLEP, PEC, whatever other group, that's not right. I mean, that's not right. It should be available for the general public and not specific groups.
I think it should also be sent to the planning commission and the board of supervisors.
Well, of course, they can send us their activity each month, you know, but for, posted to the public, if they wanted, everybody's available to a website, and if they drive by to see the property, they can inquire further. That's very simple, it's not complicated, and it's a good policy that the board of supervisors can do.
Well, I guess, I'm intrigued, I think we're making progress here, but the policy, the idea of a policy, I mean, what, what is it that compels us now to post properties the way they, they are? It's written in, isn't it, or is it by just habit and policy? It's already.
It's requested by the board of supervisors.
Okay, so that is the precedent would be for that kind of thing.
So, I make a motion that we pass this order with a recommendation of approval to the board of supervisors with a sidebar that included in an approval and consideration by the board of supervisors that they make a policy that any subdivision of a property is to be posted of the pending zoning decision, and also that there be a, be posted to the county website in a format that would be of notice to the general public.
I just have one question, does that include the paper?
No, that costs money.
Does it include the application itself?
No.
What is it?
It's just saying that Gary Light has, has applied for a subdivision of his hundred acres at Lowell Mill into four parcels. Available documentation is, is, is in the zoning office.
I like it in the paper. I mean, I still know plenty of people that don't even use the internet in Rappahannock, they're older, but still.
If they don't use the internet, they don't drive by the property, how much interest would they have in the property, you know?
Maybe a lot, because they never leave the place, you know?
You know, you could just increase the applicant fee in order to pay for the cost of the newspaper, and since the newspaper goes out daily over, you know, the internet, yeah, Rappahannock News posts daily, you could arrange to have that done, you know, as soon as the application is made.
So, I don't know what Rappahannock News charges for.
So I don't know what the Rappahannock News charges for a legal notice, but I do know that most newspapers now make the majority of their income from legal notices. And I have heard of some trustee petition suits and divorce suits being published that ran into thousands of dollars and whether...
Well, that will deter somebody looking for a subdivision.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second for that motion? Are there ways in which we can amend the motion so that it would be something that we can move forward?
I mean, I just, I like putting in the paper because like I say, even if somebody can't get out, they can't drive, they still have a right to know. I mean, it's not their fault. I mean, the internet, Rappahannock sucks in it.
Mrs. Sis, you can put that in the motion and then the Board of Supervisors will decide what extent they will have, you know?
So that would be, would that be your request for an amendment to the motion?
Yes, ma'am.
Would you be friendly to that amendment?
Absolutely.
All right. So I guess we got a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion on this?
Ms. Haines, give you some grammatical corrections or, or is there anything else?
Is there anything substantive or is it mostly grammar and spelling?
I saw one on line 309. It was the only place where it mentioned designated agent. Everywhere else, our zoning administrators are just referred to as the agent. I'd recommend removing designated.
And so far, this looks like...
Or adding designated to every agent.
So if you could just look at that later, maybe, Michelle, and reconcile that for continuity throughout. Is that what you're going for there, Brian? Any other thoughts or comments or details you might need to get on board with this motion?
On board.
Okay. Anybody else?
Reluctantly.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. And do we need a roll call or just a...
I'll be happy to do a roll call for you.
All right, thank you very much.
Mr. Sholan?
Aye.
Mr. Sis?
Aye.
Mr. Atkins?
Aye.
Ms. Ritter?
No.
Mr. Light?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
And Mr. Henry?
Aye.
All right, so we'll send that on to the board. Thank you, everybody, for coming out tonight.
Madam Chair, we have a second court hearing in the same agenda, a little minor change to zoning ordinance, which is a reference to the Type 2 road standard.
Oh, okay. But Michelle mentioned that at the beginning of the public hearing.
I just feel much more comfortable if you're very close to the public hearing.
Okay, so let's have a quick public hearing in addition to what was advertised. Let's also look at, or have a quick public hearing, or as long as you'd like to talk about the consideration of the zoning ordinance amendment for Chapter 170 limited to the wording of the cross-reference of the Type 2 road standard. Mr. Curry, is there something in particular to this that you'd like to address?
The zoning ordinance referred to the old version of Type 2 with the potential change to Chapter 147. That Type 2 standard is referred to in the bodies of appendix and then referred to at the top as an attachment. This standardized the word attachment and makes it clear that it's not the 1973 version, but the current version.
All right. So if there's anyone that would like to speak specifically about the Type 2 road standard, now is your opportunity to do so.
Is it still a 50-foot right of way?
Is that also coming?
Yeah. So we'll circle back to that, Mr. Kohler. Anybody else? Yes.
Karen Hunt, Jackson District. I'll just make the comment that as long as this is purely an administrative alignment for wording and that there is no change at all in the application of the Type 2 road, its 50-foot right-of-way application, that everything else is the same. And the only thing that we're addressing here is this is in this section called an attachment or it's in this section here called, you know, whatever else. As long as it's purely just pointing to the reference and there is nothing else of substantive change to that, I think that's important. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak? All right, then I'll close the public hearing on the Type 2 road standard. Commissioners, do you have any strong feelings or emotion in regards to the road standard change?
I mean, maybe, I just, to Ms. Hunt's point, is this, you can see the changed language. It seems to just be a reference. Is there any, I mean, Type 2 road standard definition is still what it is, right? We're not touching...
Because literally, the only change in the zoning ordinance, Chapter 147, which you just discussed, did include and updated Type 2 standard. It's Attachment A, it was, I think, the last page before you got to the signature block. The things that changed there were the crown on the road to make it a slope as opposed to six to nine inches so that it works for a narrow road and a wide road. And also to add some clarification on the slopes of the ditches to make it clear that those two-to-one, three-to-one mean horizontal to vertical.
And we had already made those changes.
Those changes have not been adopted. They're proposed as part of the subject, Chapter 147.
And they wouldn't be...
But all the right-of-way stuff is the same where Type 2 applies and doesn't apply. None of that changes. You can pull up the picture if you would.
And if we proceed with those proposed changes, then they would affect this the same as they would have if we had made this change.
Yeah, it just needs to refer to Attachment A of Chapter 147.
Right.
Not Appendix C of the 1973 subdivision. Can you go to the last page, Michelle?
No. It's not there. I couldn't find it.
Yeah, we'll get that figured out.
So this is to reconcile what we've long recognized, I think, if I remember correctly, that if the road is narrow, then the slope is basically not navigable.
And what are we looking at, please?
So that's the Type 2 road standards, this sketch. Changes were where it says crown.
No, I guess I'm, where is this in our process and what activity, what work stream is this part of that we are in the midst of?
This is included in the subdivision change. It is referred to from the zoning.
Okay.
It is currently attached to the Chapter 147 subdivision.
So this is draft language that is still pending action and referring back to our comments earlier, this would also be where we could pick up any additional changes that we would like to propose to the subdivision ordinance when we get back to this. But to the point, for tonight, doesn't change anything with respect to the reference, so...
Would you say that again?
No, but I will say, I move that we approve the stated reference to this Type 2 road standard as proposed.
Thank you.
Ms. Dwight, I'll second that.
Thank you both. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any votes? Thank you. That takes us on to our electrical substation presentation for the evening with Sarah Parmley. He has been very gracious to join us from PEC.
Thank you.
And it's times like these that I'm so glad PEC understands the importance of these matters here to the heart of Rappahannock County and thank you for bearing with us.
Absolutely. Glad to be here again. Christine, you will have seen this again, but I'll keep this pretty short and sweet. Basically, we're aware that there's this, there's a little bit of language potentially lacking in your current code of ordinance and we just really recommend that you maybe take one of two steps to address that, to just help give the county more agency, potentially in future transmission decisions. If you could go to page two. So electrical transmission substations, they're a necessary part of the transmission grid. They're typically used, if you could hold up for a sec, they're typically used to pull power off of a transmission line and distribute it either to residential areas or in this case, this is a substation Loudon, to a data center. They're also used to connect two transmission lines if they cross. We are seeing a massive increase in the number of proposed substations, most of this being associated with data centers, but we're also seeing new transmission lines being proposed. And very often, a transmission line is a line between two substations. So that's part of the reason why we would like the county to have a little bit more agency. If you can scroll down. Next slide, please. Next slide? Oh, I'm sorry. Who am I looking at? All right.
Who's driving?
Who is driving?
This is driving from there.
Ah, that's fine. Yeah, so basically, the neighboring counties of Culpeper and Falkir have approved several data centers, big increase in potential energy load. And so we are seeing the potential for new transmission lines specifically to serve those data centers, including an upgrade, there we go, right here, to the 500 KV line that currently crosses the northern part of Rappahannock County. Virginia state law allows localities to approve or deny substations, but not transmission lines. So having this, having some language to require local review of substations would not necessarily prevent a transmission line from coming from Rappahannock. But if Dominion were to try to route one through there or to route a substation into Rappahannock, it would give the county more agency. We think this is also relevant because Falkir County and Culpeper County, your neighbors to the east, both require conditional use permit for substations. I've also, and we think it would be a good idea for Rappahannock to not be the weakest link in that chain. I've sent in your presentation some potential language to consider, you know, Loudon, Prince William, Fairfax County, they have not adopted Fairfax's county's language just yet, but it is potentially the most up-to-date. And one of the things that they do include in that, in the proposed language, is some noise restrictions, which is kind of a new thing. Folks are now realizing because there are lots and lots of substations now and previously there were a few, they do put off a hum and sometimes that can be a nuisance to the nearby areas. There's also generally a setback requirement from nearby residential areas, things like that. We did offer kind of two general recommendations, either amend your current electrical generation language to include substations, but as your county administrator has pointed out and we agree, you know, a substation is going to have a very different on-the-ground impact than, you know, say a utility-scale solar field or even a battery bank. So it might not be appropriate to lump that in with them, especially since this can be a utility that benefits local use in some instances as well. So we would encourage Rappahannock not to try to prevent all substations, but to make sure that you would say, and substations that had to occur in your county and, you know, could require some necessary and standard language governing that, so.
So why, you know, why not exclude all substations?
Yeah, just because you might need one. You know, Sperryville has a substation because, you know, that community needs to pull line off of the transmission line to keep the lights on in those houses. So, you know, yeah, I also don't know that you could outright ban them. We get very, we get very nervous when folks start about outright banning them or banning anything, especially when it can be considered important, you know, critical infrastructure for the area. You can deny them, but I don't know if you could go so far as to ban them.
Did you say you can deny them?
You can deny them. That was a ruling from 2015 down in like Prince George County or something like that. But yeah, and that was, that was pretty earth-shaking. Basically, the Supreme Court of Virginia ruled that locality couldn't deny the substation, or not, sorry, could not deny the transmission line because there was a proven need for the transmission line. However, they could have some say in the location of the substation, since those are more flexible, I think, to some extent than where a transmission line is going.
How many substations we have in Rappahannock?
Yeah.
Just run off of the alien road.
Big monster. It's huge, just like the image you showed. Why borrow this into new energy generating facility?
Yeah, so why, well, you could do that, just because you already have that, it would be a less word count to edit. But if you were to create, you know, a separate category for substations, there's a lot of language out there from other localities in Virginia that you could borrow from and tweak to make it Rappahannock-appropriate.
It's just interesting that when you're here before, we talked about data centers briefly, we didn't have them in our zoning ordinances and you said that's good enough.
Yeah, so...
But now you're here today saying, "We want you to put this in our general ordinances."
That's a very good question. Yeah.
So I'm a little befuddled by that, a little frustrated because as PEC with a lot of lawyers and, I mean, I realize you are a donation-based, you know, you need to raise a lot of money, scare people to motivate them, but, you know, we're asking for help and it'd be nice if you could just help us draft an ordinance so we don't get caught with our pants down like Prince William County, Loudon County, Falkir. You know, I wish we could get a little bit of time instead of making hyperbolic YouTube videos and sit down and actually do something where we can actually prevent or control what could come into Rappahannock County. Now, I know we're not the perfect ideal location, but things change. You know, maybe the power source is readily available and it's no large amount of pickup truck. Or maybe they can transmit that data that they have to use those dark cables for along that 29 corridor wirelessly someday, insecurely. Then Rappahannock is a cheap place to move a data center into. So I don't know why we're pretending that this is about substations when I think it's really about data centers. And if we're going to say we don't want data centers, let's say we don't want data centers.
Yeah, so Rappahannock is in a different place than Loudon, Prince William, and even Fairfax to some extent, especially with the substations. Most of the substations that those guys are seeing are approved as part of the data center campuses. What you all would potentially have would be a substation associated with connecting one transmission line to another line, something associated with a larger infrastructure scheme, not necessarily associated with a single industrial development, which is why, you know, we have a slightly different recommendation for you. Electrical infrastructure, energy infrastructure, that language is different than your industrial zoning. You do allow in your code of ordinances for energy-producing infrastructure. It is very restricted, but you do allow it. And, you know, whereas you do not allow... you do allow it, and, you know, whereas you do not allow anything that could be potentially considered a data center anywhere in your code of ordinance. So, it's, it's kind of two different things. Our concern was that you allow some, enough, you know, different types of electrical infrastructure, energy-producing infrastructure, that it could be construed that, you know, the county specifically chose not to include substations in that definition because they didn't want to say in them.
Do solar farms need substations?
It depends on the size. Some of the big ones do, some of the smaller ones don't. It depends on the size of the facility, how much, how many megawatts it's putting out, and the nearby distribution lines and what they can possibly handle, whether it needs a substation or whether it can just have a distribution box.
So, on the distribution lines, you can't really prohibit that. They can expand those. I mean, they can increase in size, footprint, and everything else. But, you Sperryville, for example, if they want to take those lines to that substation, and now they want to increase that substation because they already have the lines in place, how could we stop the substation?
Yeah, and, you know, I will have to talk to John McCarthy about expansion and see, you know, because that substation is already existing, and fortunately, in this most recent upgrade, they're not planning on expanding the footprint, but, you know, that would be something that would potentially be a benefit if, you know, you had regulations for substations, so that if that one expanded in the future, you could have a say in it.
They're not upgrading the subsection.
They're not expanding it. They are, my understanding is that they are upgrading the equipment since it is mature.
But they are currently...
Expanding...
...ownors for that.
Yeah, but they are expanding the right-of-way for the line, so, yeah.
So, it does seem that we should probably, if we're going to write an ordinance on substations, include something about expanding.
I think that would be a good idea. I did not look specifically at, for any language that would reference that, my mistake, but I will see if there is something that we should specifically, or that we could specifically recommend to you to address expansion, or if that is even on the table.
So, the specific items that we need to address in any changes to the ordinance is sound? What else?
Yeah, so, first off, specifically say substations need a conditional use permit or special exception, setbacks from residential areas, screening and buffering, you know, it's, to go back to Sperryville, it'd be great if there had been more screening and buffering requirements in place by the locality when that, that got dropped in there. And then, yeah, sound as a, as a new burgeoning thing that Fairfax, who's trying to be on the cutting edge of this, is, is also adding, and since that's also something that is potentially important to Rappahannock as well, I thought that would be good to include as well. Yeah, pretty simple.
This was something I should have let everyone know. The genesis of this discussion item was when PEC was putting on the data center presentation at the library. I was, I was out of town and not able to attend, but it, that generated a lot of interest. And I, I know that we on this committee also have a lot of interest in these developing concerns that are more relevant maybe to neighboring localities right now, but they're always in the back of our minds. So, I called Sarah and I said, you know, "We had this discussion on the planning commission, and I see there's a lot of rumbling and front-page newspaper articles and presentations, and, you know, what can we do that it would be a practical, effective step? Is there something we need to do now?" And this was her recommendation, and so she was very kind to come and make this presentation to the board, at which point the board referred to us. So...
So, this is not a silver bullet that's going to kill the substation. It's simply to give control over the aesthetics and these other issues of the one acre, two acre, whatever size the substation is. Now, in terms of transmission, correct?
Yeah, it's, yeah. There is no silver bullet, but yeah, it would give you more agency, it'd provide more public input, yeah.
Well, I want to interject there, because if we subjected it to the special exception requirements, it would, we could consider all of the things that we consider for other special exception requirements, including health and safety and other demands. So, I do think it's a little more powerful. If I were going to answer the question that was posed to you, I think it's pretty clear in your slide about the Supreme Court decision, where the Supreme Court has been very clear that while you may not be able to stop transmission lines, and again, I believe that our concern here is more about bigger, expanded, and maybe multiplying transmission lines, given our position between the demand and the supply. But, this clearly gives us control or a voice in the placement of substations that connect transmission, which is the bulk power system to our local one. So, to me, it's, it's part of the answer as to why we should do this is because we can, and we have, you know, clear legal authority to do it, and it's really about, it's probably complicating the process of adding another transmission line, expanding transmission lines in a way that would require some additional on-the-ground infrastructure, as much as it is about a direct get to data center.
Okay, a couple of things here. I remember when, I think it was Allegheny, Allegheny that used to own the line, you're right.
AEP.
Tom McAdams. So, anyway, Tom McAdams owned it. I remember when they came in there for upgrades, and it was a process, bought the additional land from Miller, and was, I think it was supervisor level, where you agreed to the buffering, you know, planting the trees and all this. And, you know, a couple of years later, you know, the trees were pretty tall. I don't know whether some of them have died or whatever, but, I don't know, but the tree was pretty well screened, and it was consideration done at that time. Now, in reference to the 2015 ruling, the thing that sticks out in my mind when you say that, 2015 was before data centers. And now, it's a whole different foggy.
Yeah.
So, you know, whether that would stand, or whether the state would apply the Dillon Rule to the power and substations and take away all that local authority, you know, if you've got a $5 billion data center building, being built in Auburn, Ashburn, you're going to let Rappahannock County hold you up on a $2 million substation expansion for very long, you know? So, I mean, I think it's good to recognize that we do this for aesthetics and for community standards and things like that. It's not about a shutdown saying, "No, no, 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 no." So, I think we've got to be realistic about this.
Location, and all the other considerations.
So, another thing too, let's talk about the power transmission.
Yeah.
So, power for these things are coming kind of from the south, maybe Lake Ganna area, other places south, coming from the coal fields, Ohio.
Yeah.
And what's our big safety net in terms of stuff coming from the north? Shandau National Park. They're not going to come through the park. They're going to come around the park, and go from Royal that way. Stay away from the park and come in to Northern Virginia that way. I think there was a gas line or a power line crossed over the mountain into Zep here through Shandau County, Warren County.
I'm not familiar with that. However, the line that currently runs from Front Royal down to the Morrisville Substation and Falkir, in the PJM Interconnections, most recent proposal window, that line did, was up for getting an additional 500 KV that would be along next to it.
Yeah.
I've got a letter drafted to send to the Board of Supervisors, probably tomorrow, about that line, but, yeah, that's potentially coming. And, you know, to your point about, you know, would, would the Virginia legislature humor, you know, Rappahannock saying, "No, you can't have your substation," so that you can't have a, you know, 500 million, whatever, dollar data center development somewhere else? You know, you all don't have any data center developments, so I think you all do have a strong case of like, "Look, we are not causing this problem. Do not make us the force solution." And, you know, and to that point also, a lot of these localities are including, or, well, a lot of these data center developers have figured out that they need to include a substation site with the rezoning of every single data center. So, all of the data centers in Coal Pepper that have been approved include a substation site. All of the data centers that I'm aware of that have been proposed or approved in Falkir include a substation site as well, which, you know, if a locality were to try to deny one of those after they had approved a data center, that would be a really sticky situation.
What's it trying to do? Didn't they?
I think there was, I think there was one maybe, and Fairfax, there was a big issue, there was a lot of community pushback because it was a substation that was needed for a data center that the locality had approved. But because you all are not approving massive amounts of energy demand, I think you are somewhat safer, though. I do think you are correct that this is, this is not going to be a forever solution, but we're in a rapidly evolving situation, and nothing is a forever solution right now.
I was shocked last week to read that data center construction, AI and all this, is now equal to three-quarters of the consumer GNP in the United States.
Yeah.
It was just, the amount is just absolutely incredible. And you think about Northern Virginia being, you know, like the capital of it, of the world, I mean, it's, it's, it's just like a bomb going off up there in terms of data facilities and power and water.
Yeah, yeah. It's, these are unprecedented times, and, not to, let's see, the Falkir Times, if anybody reads that today, just put out a really good four-part series about the data center expansion in Virginia and the energy crisis that it has led to. If you are interested in that, there's some really good local reporting about that issue. But, yeah.
The substation in Sperryville, they're supposed to be screened, so, I mean, is it just old and everything died? Is that what's happened?
Yeah, and actually, I...
That is a problem.
Jeff Henry attends our Board of Supervisors meetings every month, and I've reviewed the application for the Sperryville substation, and it, there was screening embedded in it. And so, Mr. Curry actually reached out to Jeff, and Jeff said, "Well, we'll have our folks look at it and make the improvements."
Was that the 89 one?
I think so. It was Warner Krebs or Sharon Pierce and...
That application, they're requesting expansion for their substation in Sperryville. I'm sorry.
I don't think they're increasing the footprint.
No new transmission capacity, and to include the tent to use newly required. Basically, they were expanding the construction yard. They were holding poles, keeping stuff that goes on parapoles. So, I was kind of wondering what, you know, what was this code section that this was approved under in the first place, since we don't have a substation in our zone ordinances? So, Michelle's going to take me to that.
I was 19. That wasn't your fault.
She said it happened before, because it was first proven around 82 or something like that.
Yeah. Well, this is just to close a loophole and, you know, be able to review these for the future. It sounds like everyone thinks this is a worthy use of our time.
I would say so.
This use is allowed under Section 3.3 P. What is that?
That was the 1986 zoning ordinance was codified that way before it was recodified, I think, in 90s to the 170s, with the whole. So, somewhere between 1989...
Where can we find that language?
You've got it. Very well. We also, the 1973 ordinance is posted online. I don't have the original 1986 ordinance posted online.
So, it sounds like they'll send that to you.
Let me ask one question.
There's already...
Well, just kind of curious what they, if it mentioned substations, then why did it get pulled out from the subsequent writing? And this actually, you said, you know, construction yard, I thought was kind of interesting.
I talked to somebody the other day, I was in a meeting with the Attorney General, and they said that there's some consideration in the state now about applying the Dillon Rule to solar fields.
I know that that was a really hot topic of discussion during the last General Assembly. I, I don't speak to everyone in the General Assembly. My focus is local, but I do expect that that will be an issue that does reappear at a future date as, you know, regardless.
All right. Any other questions?
Thank you. That's really useful.
Thank you very much, Sarah, and we'll look forward to working with you on that language.
And you all have my contact information. If you have additional questions, I'll try to get some information about you about potentially regulating the expansion of an existing.
Thank you so much. All right. That takes us on to public comment. At this time, if anyone would like to address the commission, please come to the microphone and identify yourself by name and the district in which you reside. And again, if we could keep our comments to about five minutes a person, that would be wonderful. Thank you. Anyone like to speak? Thank you, Sarah.
Madam Chairman, what I just brought up there about the solar fields, you know, we always kind of hear about things that are after the fact, after Richmond dunked something. So, you know, if this happens, I mean, that's a real game changer, you know, if it becomes basically out of our hands. And the fact that there is such a big electrical demand that's growing in Virginia for the data centers, it's a real probability that they're going to try to do something to address this need for supply. So, that's a real, real, real big item that we always, you know, we're not informed. Well, I think we're way ahead of it now, and we know a little bit that, yeah, you know, it's, it's in the cloud out there being talked about. So, it's something that we need to be keen to try to glean from, so that if there's any way that we can put direction on it slightly, it may be good. So, there you go.
Thank you. Is there anyone that would like to speak?
Yes. Monica Worth, Piedmont District. After that discussion, it's a little difficult to go back to some of our earlier conversation, but I wanted to make three succinct points that have arisen in the conversation since then. One is that, as far as the subdivision topic goes, I do think it's worth recognizing, and I'm not sure it has been recognized, forgive me if it has been and I missed it, our relationship with the park does add an economic incentive to preserving our role as a buffer for all that the park preserves. And it's an economic incentive to us, because people go to the park through us, and they come to us for that reason. And those, you know, many of the things the park preserves would, of course, would be the wildlife, and in homage to MK Ishi, a billion-year-old view shed, an environment that draws tourists to and through us. And I also think that we have an incentive as humans, sort of duty, really, if we value the gift that, of that location, of the character of Rappahannock County itself, that is informed so much by the presence of the park, and frankly, the land itself that all the citizens of Rappahannock County share, not just the individual plots and pieces, but that the landmass of Rappahannock County that everyone shares that has a relationship with that park as well. Second point is that I believe Michelle's job is already very difficult, and I'm wondering, having listened to the discussion of all of the details of various pieces and parts of what we were talking about tonight, can that one person be expected to have, so Mr. Curry's knowledge of this realm, or Mr. McCarthy's education in zoning, as well as his 35 years in, of experience in service? I mean, Mr. Curry is, we're relying on him to explain the details of what's required or on the horizon, and that is a lot to expect of someone in Michelle's position to understand all of that level of background. And I don't mean any disrespect to what you know, Michelle, that I... that I haven't heard or don't, or couldn't know. Um, so, in, in, I think I've said what I need to say on that. The third point is, any, I heard some uptake on the idea of, of proactively notifying citizens who ask, who wish to be notified of these applications. And I just want to raise the question, you know, why would the county not proactively and even creatively support the interests of citizens it serves, um, and provide robust service to notify the citizens of the county, the citizens of the county, not necessarily say PEC or somebody else, but the citizens of the county who sign up to be notified with, and do that with a level of energy and collaboration, um, to make the most of whatever opportunity this change could create in how we work with our citizens in the county. Change may not be what we want, but it does offer some sort of an opportunity to create that level of collaboration that could be quite useful. Thank you.
Thanks, Monica. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Yes.
Karen Hunt, Jackson District. With regard to the changes in the subdivision ordinance, when it was three lots or less and was administrative, that was administrative. However, everything else that was five or more required not only certified mailing notification to all adjacent and adjoining property owners, which has now been stripped from this, number one, so there's reduced public participation right there. Then again, it required a public hearing, meaning before the Planning Commission and the Board. So, there was newspaper notification and two opportunities by the public to comment. There was the ability of neighbors to notify neighbors, for people to have a chance to look at what was presented because it was going to be there with the documents as opposed to having to go in and burden the one official that we have who sometimes has a full plate asking to see these plans. At a bare minimum, this should be put up the way other applications are to make it easier for everyone. We should not be putting roadblocks. We've been, we've had roadblocks now put upon us by the state. How are we gonna react to that? Just saying post a notice and put it on the website and let everybody fend for themselves. Let's, again, proactively look at ways to make up the deficit that we now have by not being able to sue certified mailings to those most affected and who may not understand where their neighbors are helping them or their children are helping them. Thanks.
Thank you.
Anybody else wishing to speak? You, Diane. It's okay. I'm sorry if I was looking over your shoulder.
Diane Bruce, Sperryville. Um, I can't emphasize enough how I think our county needs a zoning consultant, a zoning expert to consult with, to help Michelle. But not only that, Mr. Curry just said that, uh, the subdivision ordinance has not been updated to comply with state law for a long time. Well, why not? Why hasn't? Whose job is it to do that? Is it Michelle's job to update it and present it to the county? Is it Mr. Curry's job? Whose job is it to update things? I would think it's the zoning administrator. Mr. Curry is the county administrator, but these things are not happening and, and they're complicated. So, I, I really think that we might, as a board, recommend to the Board of Supervisors that they consider hiring a zoning expert consultant, uh, who would be kind of on call and would also help with updating our ordinance, uh, as it's needed and when it's needed. Thank you.
Thanks, Diane.
I thought we hired a group to do that.
I was gonna, well, you know, I don't want to get into it too much until public comment's over, but we can certainly circle back to that. Um, any other comments from the public? Okay. I just wanted to revisit the timeline, which is that we did, as a county, hire the Berkeley Group. And I think we all remember and know the Berkeley Group. The Berkeley Group was very helpful when we did the comprehensive plan and we had some really great contacts at the Berkeley Group at that time. And they saw that project through for us along, uh, in concert with this commission and the Board of Supervisors. And, uh, it was really a great experience. Um, I would say, uh, some players changed and the board undertook to update the zoning ordinance, uh, with the Berkeley Group, again, uh, shortly after the adoption of the comprehensive plan. Um, the board players changed and some of the board players changed and the Berkeley Group, uh, representatives changed. I think we all remember, um, when we worked on the, uh, comprehensive plan, I believe, uh, Todd was our first contact there, the young gentleman that came and engaged with the commission. And then later, um, I think the gentleman's name was Darren. I think he was the president of the Berkeley Group. Um, and he was a great fit from a rural background and really understood Rappahannock County and did a great job. Um, we had a few folks, I think, that worked on the zoning ordinance with us. Um, we received a lot of pushback from the public, and I'll say rightfully so, about this, the sweep and the scope of the changes to the zoning ordinance, um, that we were receiving back from the Berkeley Group at that time. And, uh, the public comment, as I recall it and, and I agreed with, was that, um, there was too much going on at once because there were, there were changes being made to align with, um, current state code, but there were also changes being made to reorganize. And that combination of aligning with state code and reorganizing at the same time was incredibly challenging to track even for people that have, uh, a vast background in proofreading, which I do a lot of proofreading and I found that incredibly difficult to track. And so, the public request at that point, and which I echoed on the Board of Supervisors, I think, in several evening meetings where I asked for it to be on the agenda, um, was to simply narrow the work and to take it on in two phases. And the first phase would be to align with state code and once those updates were made, that there could be a reorganization. And that would allow for thoroughness and also the transparency the people of Rappahannock County expect, and rightfully so that we expect it. Um, and I, I guess, um, the majority of the board has not seen the wisdom of undertaking that work and that is why that work has not been done. I do not think it is fair to place the absence of that work on staff because the staff reports to the board. And so, if you think it's important work to do, I would encourage you to talk to your Board Supervisor's representative because at the end of the day, staff responds to the board's direction. Um, and so, I thank everyone for bearing with me on that history. I, I thought it was important to, and please correct me if I'm wrong, Gary, but that is, that is sort of the, the history of why that work was set aside as I understand it.
The diagnostic that started that off included the zoning ordinance and subdivision ordinance. And I, it'd ironic that I point out that tonight, you were talking about aligning a portion of subdivision ordinance with state code, which is a small part of the zoning ordinance, it should charge for it. And that's met with a difficult conversation to, even to act. And so, it's no wonder that trying to do the same thing plus some for the zoning ordinance could get more.
Challenging, challenging without a doubt.
Christine,
Yes, sir.
You've, you've mentioned something here that, that, that is in the DNA of the political process of, of Rappahannock County. Rappahannock County has always procrastinated on making decisions for the future. That's why now we're facing a twenty-plus million dollar courthouse with a six-cent, uh, increase in the tax rate and we're looking all around to blame somebody. And I was just literally shocked last, uh, Monday night when I watched the, uh, the, the video, that meeting where Mr. Whitson started out, you know, we're, we're gonna go after, we're gonna get the money from the town. We're not gonna, we're gonna get the money from the town and it's not gonna be any tax burden on the citizens. Then, in his next breath, we're gonna get the money from the inn at Little Washington. They're taking in thirty or forty million dollars and, and we're gonna get the money from there. There will be no tax increase. Then, in the very next breath, it was Patrick O'Connell mentioning, you know. And so, in essence, it was, you get a tax burden in the county from this courthouse is because of Patrick O'Connell. And, you know, that's not right.
I, I don't...
You know, that's not right. What we need to do in, in all levels of the county is make some tough decisions. Like, we need to, on the, on the board level, we need to go through everything and look at every revenue sources, zoning, everything, and, and do some changes and bring in some revenue. I mentioned collecting taxes twice a year. I talked to somebody at Falkir the other day. When you apply for a million-dollar permit there, you pay the business tax then. You know, all these kind of things could add up to two, three hundred thousand dollars, but there's no momentum to do that. Well, we'll look into it, you know. Well, it, it never happens. So, just like with this zoning thing here, it's, right, we need to do all this work here, but, you know, we are here each month for some time, but we're not, this is not a full-time job.
Right.
You know, and, and everybody in government here has their job. So, if, if we need that person to be this expert, this, this czar of zoning, so what's, what's one penny on the tax rate?
It's like two hundred thousand dollars.
So, we, we need a half a penny on the tax rate to hire somebody.
Oh, yeah, at least.
Yeah.
At least.
Yeah, maybe a penny, you know, to make that really special person. So, I mean, are we willing to do that politically? No.
No, there's general, I mean, that's,
So, we're gonna...
You know, it's a two-sided coin. Like, we want things to always be the way they are and so, we want to be vigilant about the future. However, we don't want to change things because what we've got is always work.
If, if, if,
It's very, it's a very difficult negotiation.
If there wasn't DEQ in the nineteen eighties, we'd be still be dumping trash down at Woodbill in the field.
So, I, I just want to say that I, I don't think that I participated in, in, in targeting the inn at Little Washington. But, you know, my, my recollection of my comments in that conversation was that I think Patrick O'Connell, and I did call him by name, but he is a natural genius. And what must it be like to be born that way and how lucky we are as a county to already benefit from the residual taxes that we realize for meals and lodging as a county, just by being in cer, you know, circumference to the town, which is, I, I think something that we all should recognize.
The Board of Supervisors should look at it from the standpoint, it was a number of years ago when there was a move within the county of Little Washington to give up their charter. And the county said, we don't want you. We don't, we don't want you, okay? Well, they persevered, did the things they needed to do, the sewer plant and everything else.
Yes, they've done a very good job.
And it's a beautiful casebook. If I was a, a zone, a, a planning student at UVA, I'd do Little Washington as a perfect case study of a small town. So, instead of trying to rob them of, of double taxation on the people of Little Washington, the, the county should look at this as a success story and say, maybe we can do this in Sperryville. Maybe, you know, we got all these people striving to do things in Sperryville. Maybe we could, you know, give them better water and sewer, give them better sewer and create water up there. And maybe we can have some, some, some really big success stories up there that solve some of our problems.
Yeah. The other problem there is, as you know, there's just been a plan approved to move forward, but that, what's been approved doesn't approve, it doesn't increase, uh, the number of people that could subscribe. It's not a growth-oriented system, which is one of the many reasons that I couldn't support it.
Yeah. So, there again, we need to be enlightened and look and learn from all the people's success, you know, and, and not try to just rob their kitty.
I, I understand what you're saying.
So...
I sympathize. And I'm sure you heard my comments about,
Yeah, and just like this zoning thing,
About working on the scale of the building too.
All these things, all these things we're talking about, yeah, it'd be great to solve all this list of, of board directives and take on a reorganization of this. If we did that, we would have to be a little bit tough. We have to go the right route, do the right thing.
We'd have to have to be a little bit crazy.
Well, yes, yeah.
I mean, I, I've always viewed it as my job as the board's appointee to this commission to make sure I understood what the priority was from the Board of Supervisors so that we could address things in a, in a responsive and accurate way. And I, I hope that that's been fair and I hope that I've also conveyed to you all how very appreciative the board is repeatedly because we do a lot of work. And it's painful to me to hear in a meeting tonight as portrayed as, um, and specifically to hear you, my peers, who I know work very hard and put in a lot of conscientious effort and don't particularly care what people's opinions of you are and just care about doing a job, good job. But to hear you referred to as dithering and lazy, um, I just have to speak up for you as my peers and say that was some of the most difficult public comment I've ever had to sit through. And thank you so much, um, as your peer and as a supervisor for the job that you do. Thank you. And thank you all down that end of the table too. I don't look down this way often enough.
So, it would take us, it would take us five years.
I don't think I did.
It would take us five years to, to rework the zoning.
No doubt.
We're trying to push ahead and get ahead of the curve this time in the comprehensive plan. I mean, that was a long time. So, we're trying to get that. I think we're making great progress and I think we might succeed with that and be ahead of the curve.
I think we'll do very well with it. Anyone else would like to, uh, comment? I'm so sorry, it's sort of devolved into board discussion. I did not close public comment, but I do sometimes like to be responsive when people ask relevant questions because it is a long and complicated history. And thank you for bearing with me as I recounted it as best I could remember. Anyone have any questions or want to like, want to make any further comments? All right. If there's no additional comments, I'll go ahead and close the public comment. Thank you all for bearing with us this evening. Um, that takes us on to the, speaking of hard work we've been doing, the transient lodging amendments. Um, thank you all for working your way through this. Um, I know it's sort of cliche to say that, um, changes are an iterative process, but this was something we took on after we had the, um, application for the, what was it? The Geodesic Dome Eco Retreat in Sperryville was when this came back on our, um, on our radar and, um, subsequent, um, short-term rental applications. Also, they all seem to coalesce with targeting this portion of the zoning ordinance. Um, and I think, I, I looked it over thoroughly last evening and, um, Michelle, my recollection was that there was the one portion, uh, on line fifty-eight was the last detail that we needed to work through, um, which was something that came about through discussion with the Board of Supervisors. Excuse me, that we, we refined the point that it is rented to a single party of guests with no more than one transient lodging unit in any structure. Um, and it may be located, again, line sixty-two, in the same structure as a single-family dwelling or commercially used that does not include another transient lodging. So, uh, one lodging per structure may be co-located with someone living there or a commercially used that is either by right or permitted as appropriate.
I agree. Looks good.
Did anyone have any other comments or do you think we're ready and move this forward to public hearing?
No, I think we are ready.
Okay. So, um, would you care to make a motion?
I move that we move this forward to public hearing.
All right.
I'll second that.
Thank you very much. Any additional discussion? All right. And with that, well, um, if everyone would, uh, vote aye to move forward to public hearing, if they care to move it forward, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. All right. So, we'll look forward to seeing that. I guess that'll be November by the time we get the notices through. Um, reschedule the public outreach meeting for Chester Gap for the Planning Commission.
Right.
Um, one would work for folks. I guess the soonest would be... Do we have to FOIA notice that? Is that a two-week thing?
Uh, three days, three working days. A cheap ground might want more of a base, so it's in the heart of the country.
We have been doing Monday evenings and we had been doing the Monday evenings before our Wednesday meeting. How's October twentieth for people?
Our October meeting date is the fifteenth.
Oh.
But we are closed that Monday.
Right, for the holiday. We could do, um, Tuesday, the fourteenth, if folks that, thought that would work.
This is a school board meeting. I don't know if you're drawing your answer out.
Oh. At the Chester Gap. I think most people that probably attend that school board meeting have already attended one of our outreach meetings, the ones that I can think of. And of course, we're here every third Wednesday, and the Board meets every first Monday. So, there's plenty of opportunity to continue to comment. Does that Tuesday, the 14th, sound good? And then we'll have our regularly scheduled meeting on Wednesday, the 15th? All right. Sounds good.
Christine, is that Tuesday, October 14?
That's correct.
And is that at 6:00?
Yes.
You want to potentially consider an alternative case if there's an issue with the park, like Monday, the 20th?
Does Monday, the 20th, work for folks? Okay. Sounds like that'll work. If any concerns arise, please let staff know so we can align expectations at the venue.
If there isn't a quorum, is there a reason to cancel it?
Well, there were two reasons. One is, one is that, you know, remember when we first started holding these, the popular sentiment was that we should all be present as much as possible. And then, if you'll recall, we had our first scheduled date in the town of Washington. We didn't have a quorum, and we didn't hold it. And everyone seemed okay with that, including the Board of Supervisors. And so, when we had a similar situation with Chester Gap, I followed what had been done previously and what we had discussed originally in deciding whether or not to cancel. I just want to say that I hope everyone understands I, as much as anyone else, would like to have these meetings completed. And perhaps if I understand that you all would like us to hold it regardless of whether or not there's a quorum, we can simply sit there and listen and make minutes. If that's the will of the commission, we can do that. Okay. I'll be there, too, as far as I know. Unless it snows, it's probably good.
It's October.
All right. So, it sounds like.
I'm not going to be there by myself again.
I'm so sorry.
It's not my day.
I'm so sorry, staff.
It's supposed to be charming, but.
I'm sure you put on the best possible representation for us. And I thank you so much for that. And I'm so sorry you were put in that position.
Christine, just to point out, I think you have a CPA, and October 14th is the day before a pretty serious filing deadline. And that is in Chester Gap, and he is playing with Mitchman. I'm just pointing that out there. We're considering.
I trust someone as smart as Mr. Shulman can handle his own schedule.
I'll extend them.
All right. Any, we have our list of zoning amendments from the Board of Supervisors. They've requested our next priority be the work on the substations. So, we'll look for that language and take that up.
Solar farms is crossed off, but what do they do on solar farms?
We have an ordinance. So, there was that big joint meeting. Were you there at the joint meeting?
170, 62, heat. Some letters in 170, 62.
At least it has been crossed off. We get resin?
Yeah. I mean, I think, yeah, everything on the list that's crossed off has been done. And really, the signed ordinance and public art, I mean, that's been worked on exhaustively. It's within reach.
Is that joint meeting, like, October 14th, with the Board?
Yes.
The Planning Commission will have a joint public hearing with the Board at our
October 6th meeting for the signed ordinance.
Any additional discussion? Thank you. All right. Our next regular meeting is October 15th. I have a note to ask for a motion to continue the meeting until October 6th for a joint public hearing with the Board of Supervisors for the signed ordinance. Do I need to say where and when?
It's here.
Here, at the courthouse, at 7:00 p.m. on October 6th.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Light. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Henry. Any additional discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.